Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order for the month of September and welcome everybody. We've got a full house. Glad to see everybody can make it out tonight. I apologize for my voice. I've been doing a little bit more talking than usual the last few days. At this time, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Sharp's invocation and lead us in the pledge.
After the weekend we've had, I think we'll just have a moment of silence. Amen.
...to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. At this time, are there any additional items to be added to the agenda?
Madam Chair, this time I'd like to move that we will move from the table the item participating in opioid litigation.
Okay.
I understand that we'll have to vote on that item at this time.
Okay. So, we'll move that to Item E, under Old Business. Okay.
Madam Chair, I believe on that motion, there would need to be a vote on that before the agenda is adopted, as opposed to adding it, because if it doesn't withstand the motion to remove it from the table, then it technically wouldn't make the agenda.
Correct. Correct. Okay. Everybody understand that? We need to vote on taking that off the table and adding that to the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Also, I recommend postponing the following items to the next board meeting in October. Under four, Item A and B, proclamation recognized under the 14th and under eight, youth baseball teams.
Okay.
Item six, C, consideration of donation of land located on Linden Avenue to Sanford Housing Authority.
Okay, move that to October. Postponed. Okay. All right.
Also, I recommend moving the following items to the consent agenda. B, purchase of surplus property on Lemon Springs Road. The bid for the bag-in, bag-out exhaust system room. And post-65 retiree health insurance plan renewal.
Okay. Okay. So, Commissioner Odom's motion is to postpone the following items. That would be under four, Item A and B, the proclamations of the youth baseball teams because they couldn't be here tonight. Under six, Item C, with the Linden Avenue property will be postponed until October. Under six, Item B, the surplus property on Lemon Springs Road. Under seven, Item A, the bag-in, bag-out exhaust system bid. Under seven, D, the post-65 retiree health insurance plan. Those three would be a consent agenda.
M, N, and O.
Right, right, right. Yes, they'll become M, N, and O on our consent agenda.
You can see it.
Just any questions or discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner Ray?
Yes, I'd like to add a request for the Boys and Girls Club to the agenda.
Okay, so that'll be New Business, Item E.
All right.
Boys and Girls Club. Okay. Anything else?
Then what F be the opioid litigation? Will all that be under Old?
That's opioid.
Old Business, Item E.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no. That's fine. Okay. Clear as mud. We're trying to tighten things up for everybody. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Oh, sorry.
Sure, sure.
Under New Business, I want to mention this to the manager before the meeting, but discuss a declaration requesting disaster relief as part of the hurricane for the county or the farmers.
Okay.
Just to make sure that we're included.
Right. Okay, and that'll be Item F, under New Business. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right. We'll move into our public hearings. At this time, the public hearing on the Community Transportation Program FY2020 grant application. Oh, I'm sorry, guys. I'm so sorry. Okay, approval of consent agenda. I'm trying to move us along too fast.
You're very good.
The approval of the consent agenda is their motion.
I'm approving.
Okay. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. All right, now, Ms. Davidson.
Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, we need to hold a public hearing on the proposed FY2020. We just got into 2019. Now, we're already looking at 2020. But the grant application for the Community Transportation Program application and these funds pay at, in our proposal for this year, is administrative funding, $216,260, of which the local share would be $32,439. This includes a partial payment of three to five salaries within the county, the county of the transit system. It pays 85% of the insurance on 18 vehicles. It pays part of the computer supplies, et cetera, and I can go into more detail when I actually present the grant in a couple of weeks, but that's what the administrative funding is. Then, the capital request is $302,475, of which $30,248 would be a local share, and this covers the cost of five LTV lift vehicles. We're looking at getting the 20-foot ones as replacement. This will actually take out of all of those high tops in 2020. You won't see those anymore. We'll have a full fleet of LTVs.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, at this, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on behalf of the Community Transportation Grant Application Program? Anyone to speak against? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we'll move into the joint public hearing with the Lee County Planning Board for the Future Land Use Plan. Mr. Montgomery, good evening.
Hello, Madam Chair. I'm the County Commissioners Planning Board, asking for you to consider the draft Future Land Use Plan, better known as Plan San Lee. We'll also have a public hearing tonight, and Whitney, you may want to tell the folks how that's going to be handled with it, if we're going to have the second public hearing. Apologize for it taking as long as it did, but I think we got a better product as a result of it. It has been a two-year process, but again, I think what we've come up with is extremely user-friendly and easy for folks to understand. This is an update of the plan that was done in 1999, but for all intents and purposes, this is a complete rewrite of that plan. Obviously, much has happened over the last two decades with residential development in the early 2000s, expansions of 87 South, revitalization of our downtown, expansion of our airport and industrial park. This is a broad policy guide, so it's big-picture kind of thing. So, keep that in mind as the consultant is doing his presentation. This document helps elected officials, planning boards, and planning staff provide guidance for development and redevelopment of land throughout the community as decisions are made regarding the future use of land and the character in which it is developed. And I think you'll see that emphasized with the place types that you'll see tonight. Again, this is designed to be simpler, user-friendly, has lots of visuals and terms that are easy to envision. As I said before this began, in the spring of 2016, we hired Benchmark Planning out of Charlotte to spearhead this process. The Joint Planning Commission has acted as the steering committee through this process, so they have been engaged. And during that process, a vision was established, key themes identified, objectives created, a future land, a future land use map in which over 30,000 parcels were uniquely labeled with a place type. Finally, tangible, reasonable strategies were identified to begin the process of implementing components of the plan. I'd like to introduce you to Jason Epley from Benchmark, who'll give you a presentation of the draft plan, the process that was used in developing the plan, and details about the plan and land use map. Following his presentation, he and his staff will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, David.
Thanks, David. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you for having me here. Just click it which way? Right. Yeah, okay. All right. I'm Jason Epley. It's a pleasure to be here. I'll try to be brief, but this was a two-year-long process. There's a lot of material to cover, so I'll do my best to do that. As David had mentioned, we worked very closely with the Joint Planning Commission. We had about eight meetings. We had approximately six meetings with the public during the process. We also conducted a survey that was run online. We met with several community groups to conduct, have presentations, and there were also presentations given by the planning staff to the planning boards and other groups as well. But all in all, you can see the process here in the timeline took a little bit over two years. During the process, we completed some background research because we started in 2016. Some of it's a little older, but yeah, we're waiting. I'm sure there'll be some more. We'll have some data come up in a few years from the next census to be able to update the plan. But we're really focused on a lot of your existing plans because a lot of good work has been done in Sanford, Broadway, and Lee County. We did not want to discount the efforts of the previous plans. That was a big part of the process. As I had mentioned in the background research, we've really tried to look at everything that might affect future land use. As you can see there, natural resources, utilities, land use patterns, et cetera. During the process, we met with key stakeholders and held listening sessions with all the groups that you see identified on that board. I think there might be a few more that I missed, kind of starting to run out of room, but we met with over 70 different folks during this part of the process to basically, you know, these are folks that are involved with day-to-day decisions in the county to give us some advice about the future land use. We did have some initial public input to kind of help formulate the vision and the objectives. As you can see there, we had over 50 at the first round of meetings that were held in 2016. About 70 participated in the survey. There were meetings held on the draft plan once it was complete earlier this year. From those meetings, we had about 40 attend presentations there at the buggy building, and you can see we had about 1,000 people that actually, unique visits to the website to view the website and learn about the process that way, too. So, the land use plan vision, I'm not going to read this whole thing, but basically foster sustainable growth. That was a key input that came out, direct development toward existing infrastructure where investments have been made, high-quality development and redevelopment, and something that kept coming up time and time again was to protect the unique character, quality of life, and natural resources of Lee County. These were the community input themes that came out of the process, open space, farmland preservation. I won't read them all to you. Compatibility was very important. It came up time and time again, obviously, the economy, transportation, infrastructure, quality of life. These were the main themes that came out of all the public input that we received early in the process. We had 10 strategic objectives that were developed, and those were derived from the vision and the input themes. I'll just click through those. I'm not going to read them each to you. We'll be here all night. But certainly, if you have questions at the end, we can go back to these. The stakeholder input, the vision themes and objectives, along with the background research, looking at transportation, infrastructure, where, you know, where is growth anticipated with the, you know, water, wastewater treatment? Where are the current land use development patterns? Where are the significant natural resources? All these things went together to formulate the Future Land Use Plan. As David had briefly mentioned, the Future Land Use Plan has what's called place types. These, we developed 14 categories that range from countryside to village center to urban neighborhood, because once again, this is a unique plan. Not all counties and communities work together on a joint plan. This plan is, you know, county, city, and the town, so that's why you see a lot of the different categories that you may not see in a typical, just a county plan or just a city plan. It really covers all bases and encourages growth on the edges that's compatible between all the jurisdictions that participate in the joint planning here in Lee County. So, what is a place type? It's more focused on the character of a place, not just land use, not just a line on the map that says, "We're going to have multifamily here, single family there, we have industrial here." Place types really try to focus more on the context, the character, you know, utilities that are available to support development, transportation. Once again, not just about land use. And it's about implementing a long-term vision for specific areas within the county, because, you know, each area has its own characteristics that are important. But ultimately, the place types really help either maintain character of a particular area, or there may be areas that are in transition, and the place type defines what that future character would be in that particular area. And this is what the map looks like with the character, place types identified. Countryside, obviously, would be the most, the one you see the most of up there. I can't remember the exact percentage that's in the plan, but this gives you an idea of the type of development patterns that would occur in the county in the future based on this approach. I will look in a little closer, give you kind of a quick synopsis of, just picked a few. The countryside place type here, if you noticed in the plan, there are these single sheets that kind of give you a summary of each place type. I'll start with countryside, which I think's pretty obvious what that is. Agricultural undeveloped land, that's out in the county that doesn't have urban services, is open. Agricultural heritage, very important in those areas that you saw on the map that were green. Limited residential density, you do have some development out there, but, you know, not necessarily an area you want to see a 300-unit subdivision, for example. This area gives you an example image of what we're talking about when we say countryside. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. The type of land uses, if you see that chart there, most of the land use is working lands, farmlands, forests, conservation land, some residential and a civic uses, like churches, schools, but that, so each place type has its own page, just like this. Transportation's very heavily oriented toward vehicular traffic, because obviously, you know, you're out in the countryside. You have to drive to get places. But you also encounter farm equipment, you know, out there on the road. So, you have to share roads with that, and then, you know, walking and bicycling are typically very low priorities, although you may have some bike lanes and some bike routes out through the area. It's a pretty low priority. The context, this kind of defines some of the setbacks. Obviously, you have larger setbacks out in the countryside, et cetera. And then finally, zoning, this kind of outlines the current zoning districts and what proposed districts might would look like in the future as you move forward. Taking a quick look at professional and institutional campus place type, this is zooming in on the Kelly Drive area. The purpose of this is to encourage, you know, large-scale office-type development. This is out near the community college. You can see an example image. Once again, this is projecting what the future would be like in that corridor. Here, you can see a much greater mix of uses focused on employment, commercial, and some open space, as well as civic uses. And you see here in the transportation made a little bit of a shift. You're starting to see walking becoming a higher priority with the, you know, the college campus there and other, you know, that's important to office workers and folks. Context, the, you know, the building heights change to get a little taller in this district. You see utility infrastructure. You now have public water, public wastewater that comes into play, so you can support a higher density development. And then zoning, once again, this is kind of showing how it is today and what the zoning may be in the future. And I'll start to go a little bit faster. Downtown place type, I think that was pretty obvious. Going to have a higher intensity of uses, example image, greater mixture of uses. You see residential pop-up as one of your main mix of uses in the downtown place type. Priority mode, transportation obviously shifts when you're in the downtown area to pedestrian, being very important, and you've done a great job, you know, as a city and a county planning for growth in your downtown. Context, obviously, public water and wastewater, and you, you know, start to see taller buildings, greater building heights, shorter setbacks, et cetera. Zooming out to Broadway, Village Center place type, you know, this is kind of the heart of a rural village-type neighborhood, basically, where you have different uses to serve the community, similar to a downtown, but much smaller scale. Here's an example image. Once again, you see a great mixture of land uses, transportation, vehicular, bikes, pedestrians, all kind of up in that greater priority area. The context, you know, you do have a little bit more density, but not like you would see in an urban setting than zoning. So, implementation, how do you utilize this future place type map moving forward? And the purpose of it, once again, is not so you can have a debate on, here's a hard line where we've got a multifamily use. Here's a place where you have industrial, that's, you know, you're really carving out the land uses. This type of approach really encourages you as a commission, your planning board, your staff, people that own property, to work together to talk about, you know, are the utilities there for this type of use? Does this use fit the future of this particular area of the county? It really gives you a strong framework to have those kinds of discussions, not a debate on where a line is or where a line isn't. Really helps you think about the context of the community and the particular area of the county. Another strategy for implementation would be to amend the Unified Development Ordinance. There are some changes that would need to be made to your UDO. There are some changes that need to be made in general to the UDO, but specifically to help implement the land use plan, commercial development standards so that these place types can work well together, improve your extractive industry standards, which you're working on now, need to continue to work on that, improve the airport area for development standards. Yes, it's an important area that's different, so, you know, different types of uses out there, and you need to be proactive now so you can protect that investment that the county's made in that infrastructure. Apply the new zoning districts, I think it goes without saying, but it's still something that's very important as you're working on the UDO. Obviously, there will be some new districts to match up to these place types. They need to be consistent, and this, this work would go on concurrently with updating the UDO. Talk briefly about new zoning districts. Basically, these would try to align with the 14 categories we had mentioned earlier, and you can see a little chart there that kind of, you know, shows what would relate back to the place type, and all this is in the plan. If you'd like to look at the details. This does not mean this is exactly how your new UDO zoning districts would look. Just gives you a guide when you're, when you get to that point in the process moving forward. Let's talk about where there might be some proactive zoning changes. Let's look at the Kelly Drive area. Today, this is what the zoning looks like going out Kelly Drive, and do we have a pointer? Yeah, okay, I'll just click. So, here you go. So, it shows you there's a mixture of zoning, but if the vision is for that corridor to become compatible with the community college, with the road improvements made out of 421, the place types designate this area for professional and institutional campus, as you see there, all on the corridor. So, this might be an area that you want to proactively move on, trying to preserve that area, to provide that gateway, take advantage of the utilities that could be in that area, the access to 421. You've got to look to the future to make sure, make sure you facilitate the right kind of development for your, the investments you've made in the county. Another area, this is more long-term. This is looking out in the western part of the county, near Steel Bridge Road. county, near Steel Bridge Road. And you can see the, once again, it's just an example, we just wanted to pick a few to show you how the place types might work. The current zoning is a mix of RA and RR, but as you'll see on the example coming up, new zoning might include rural, commercial, countryside, residential, and agricultural. Now, this is the existing zoning. The place type map that's in the plan proposes crossroads-type development at the key intersection there. This is what the zoning could possibly look like in the future. Once again, recognizing that there probably will be a need for some community, commercial-type uses out in the far reaches of the county and the rural areas, and this kind of helps facilitate where and how that would happen. Ongoing, an annual plan evaluation. It's been since 1999. I would argue, you've probably done a lot of updates since then, but I think the most important thing to do is, on an annual basis, working with your staff, you really need to look at these policies and make sure they're keeping up with, you know, current development trends. Because things change. The Moncur site, for example, could change things. And, you know, you just need to be prepared. This is not, this should not be considered a document, although it, you know, is a nice put-together document, will be, if you consider adopting that at some point. But I think the most important thing is to not think of this as, oh, that's a document we adopted that does this or does that. I think you really need to think of this, and I hate living document, but I think the most important thing is to use it as a resource, as you're making decisions with schools, EMS, et cetera. This should be a good resource for you to use. So every year, you should take time at one of your retreats to really dig into the plan and think about it. Regular land use plan updates, looking long-range for more full updates, you know, three to five years typically, you know, ends up being at least five years. You want to go back, take a harder look at your plan. Is it consistent? You know, has there been a major change that would drive some significant changes in the place types as a new place type emerged that you need to make some changes to? Has there been another transportation improvement that's been made that might drive a change in your plan? And then finally, this is just one document that contains objectives for the future growth of the county. This is not a comprehensive plan, and it doesn't include all the elements such as housing, transportation, you know, et cetera. This is just one document with policies about land use. So I think it's important that you realize that. So it needs to be coordinated, if you do develop a comprehensive plan down the road, this would be one element of that comprehensive plan. But it's important, as I had mentioned earlier, using this as you're looking at schools, EMS, law enforcement, et cetera. And there's existing plans now, such as the bicycle and pedestrian plans that need to be implemented. But I think the most important takeaway is that this document, you know, had public input, you know, didn't have a tremendous amount of public input. We had lots of meetings with the joint planning commissions, stakeholders, and I really feel like it establishes a solid framework for you all to make decisions as you move ahead in the future. I think the most important thing, even on top of that, is that it could change, and that's okay, that's good. This is a framework that hopefully you can use as a resource as you move forward in your day-to-day business here with the county. And I think that was it.
Wow, that was brilliant. Any questions or comments?
I've got just one question. You had some comment form, or you, I guess, on page 85?
Yes.
Were these the only comments you received, or was there another batch of them?
Well, we received comments throughout the process at the initial-
This kind of document?
I think-
A comment form is what-
Yeah, the ones that are provided to you were the comments that were from the public workshops held this summer-
I understand.
...and then responses from the website.
All the ones, all the gatherings you had, this is all you got?
Just from the ones this summer.
From this summer. The, once the draft was made public, those are the comments, since the draft was made public.
I understand, but is this all of them?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here tonight. Safe travels back home. David?
Well, I think we're going to need to open a public hearing. But I don't know if you want to, can you table the public hearing, or is, they had to have that second-
It's been advertised. Go ahead and explain.
I said we can have the public hearing, we can open and close it, and then we've had discussions about holding another public hearing-
Okay.
-at our next board meeting in October, just to allow those people who may not have been able to get out of their house to come tonight and speak, another opportunity to speak.
Okay. And I've let the planning board know that they're to table any decision to you until after that second public hearing?
Correct, because we just felt like we do have some people that are still aren't able to get out of their homes because of road failure and some flooding. So if you'll indulge us and come back in October-
Absolutely.
I don't think we need a full presentation, again, but just a synopsis, and then we'll hold the second public hearing to afford those folks an opportunity to speak as well. And just know, this is on our county website for those here and listening to this, so you can read the entire plan.
Correct. And it's also at plansandlee.com.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. And is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the San Lee land use plan? Anyone that would like to speak against? Okay, at this time, we'll close the-
Madam Chair, you had-
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, come on, thank you. Good evening. Just for the record, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm Robert Payne, Jr. I live on Lower Moncur Road, 5014, Lower Moncur Road. My mom's here. We've got land across, near the airport, they're joined the airport, and we went to a meeting a couple weeks ago where they're talking about rezoning it. And my issue is, you know, I'm a foster parent, I have foster kids. You know, if I decide to build in my house on my land, I can't do it 10 years down the road. Because I've got zoning that I had to take five acres to build a house. You know, you're cutting my ability to do anything that wants to do to help these kids or future help your parents or do anything with the land. You, 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 you know, I'm all for progress, but you own land and you worked your whole life, 35 years in it, for somebody to come in and say, "Well, you can't do this." You know? And that's, that's the issue I have. I mean, and it makes your land worth nothing. I mean, you can't build on it, can't, can't, can't develop it, your land's worth nothing. I mean, you know, if I decide to foster some more kids, I'm looking for a home to put them in because some of them are disabled. You know, I can't put them there. I got the land, but I can't use it. I can't put a house there. No, that's my, that's my issue. And while you, you know, thank you.
Oh, no, thank you, Mr. Payne. We appreciate it. Mr. Downey?
Yeah, just thought I'd make a comment.
Sure, sure, sure.
Madam Chair, I have a letter that I need to enter for the record, too, before you close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to respond to his comment for the clarification for the board and for the public. We did have a meeting, this is a specific issue, as you all may be aware. We're working with the airport authority about potential zoning improvements, and I think Mr. Eple even touched on in his presentation tonight about one of the things we talked about with the implementation of this plan, is also to look at UDO updates and make some changes there. We are working with the airport authority, we did have a neighborhood meeting, which he's referring to out there to kind of bring the property owners in, let them know a little bit about what we're proposing. Just so the public knows, we are going to have to come back. That would be a text amendment, so there would be a formal notification, they would receive a letter, they would have an opportunity to come again and speak to you at a public hearing about whether they're in favor or against this issue, that specific issue as it relates to that. So I just want to make that clear.
Okay, okay. So ongoing process?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
The letter I have is from David Clegg, who's the county manager and county attorney in Terrell County. His family owns property off of Lower Moncur Road as well, and he had the same concerns as Mr. Payne. So he wanted this letter to be part of this record and any subsequent public hearings that we have. Obviously, he couldn't be here tonight because of where he's working. So I'm putting this in the record for him.
Okay.
The clerk already has his letter, so.
All right, anyone else to speak against or with concerns? Okay, at this time, I'll close the public hearing on the land use plan. Thank you very much for that. Okay, at this time, any, give everybody a minute to move to the next room with the planning Thank you. Okay, as we sort of shift gears here. Okay. I neglected and I apologize, we need, we do not have any public comments, but I'm going to ask the board's indulgence to add one more thing to the agenda right here at this time, to call on Shane Seagraves to give us an update on the hurricane. So, so here are motions to add that to the agenda. All those approved? I oppose. Okay, sorry about that little housekeeping, I neglected.
Well, this is actually kind of a dual dog and pony show here for the board, so.
Okay, both of you, all right.
I get to give the summary, he's going to give you some of the impacts and where we stand today, so we'll probably talk a little bit about this together. But as the board knows, we had a commissioners' meeting, 2:00 on Wednesday, that kind of kicked off our operations. Actually, the EOC was activated on Wednesday at 8:00 in the morning and was deactivated at noon on Sunday, yesterday. Based on weather predictions from the state meteorologist, the county closed all offices on Friday. All programs and other events were canceled Thursday. At various times, the county was under a hurricane watch, tropical storm warnings, flood warnings, and a tornado watch. So from 9/12/18 to today, there's been a total of, one, two, three, 12, around 22 weather warnings that have been issued to Lee County. And we still are under a flash flood warning due to the Deep River Cape Fear and Upper Little Rivers causing flooding in the county. So as of this morning, we had 883 power outages. The high on Saturday morning was 11,500. And at 4:00 today, which is the last time we checked, we had 445, so.
3:30 now.
3:39 now, so.
Fantastic.
Duke had a goal to restore all power by 11:45 tonight. There are some places in the city, namely just to the west of where we're sitting, that that may not happen tonight because of some damage from last night. So our major concern right now is the flooding in Carolina Trace. Morris's Pond had the water, wouldn't call it a breach, I'd call it overflow.
Yes.
An overflow, and has gone down into Carolina Trace, causing their main entrance road to be not passable. Also, some issues along 87 with the water levels there at the, at the bridge, and DOT is watching that very closely right now. So around us, the city still has some power lines and trees down in historic area and along Spring Lane and Gulf Streets. We have various roads out in the unincorporated areas that are unpassable due to flooding. And, let's see, schools were closed today, they'll be closed again tomorrow because of that flooding. You know, they have that policy that if they can't run all their bus routes safely, they don't open at all, so still some issues out there. And then we're having issues, obviously, running colts. We're okay inside our county, but we're having challenges running to the surrounding counties, you know, in more regional, Cape Fear Hospital down in Fayetteville. And then we did get a run into Chapel Hill today. You know, the people that go to Chapel Hill have some pretty serious medical issues. A lot of them have dialysis up there, so we did run a route up there today, and we're going to try to run a route there again tomorrow. So all our offices opened at 8:00 today. The San Lee Nature Center opened, but then later was closed as we did more damage assessment around the building. The building itself is fine, but our trailer areas, parking lot, some other things were in the lower area were damaged, so we felt it was best just to go ahead and close the entire park. Kiwanis Family Park was closed due to the flooding and the amount of mud that came onto the trail, making it difficult, and then we canceled all athletic events. And then we were able to get all the mancomedian centers open today. Highway 42 was late opening because of power, so, but, so that's kind of our update. And FEMA has, Mr. Slime was inquiring about the FEMA declarations, and everybody around us, except for Moore County and Chatham County, have been declared. We have not been declared yet, so we have a lot of work to do to come up with our application to justify being declared, at least from the standpoint of individual assistance. I don't think we're going to have enough money for public assistance, namely, the big thing in public assistance is debris removal, and since we didn't get as much wind as we thought we would get, we'll have problems, you know, getting that type of assistance.
So, a couple things about the storm, and we'll start with the first slide. So when you're with the person, that's a nightmare, when you look at that slide. They were stacked behind us coming this way. Florence, as we talked about earlier, middle of last week on Wednesday, we started watching Florence when it come off of the coast of Africa, it was supposed to turn north and go away from us. And this storm just kept defying the odds and put a bull's eye, basically, on North Carolina, actually on us, in Raleigh. When we had our meeting on Wednesday, I told everybody, it was like it was a perfect bowling alley coming towards us. The forecast models, you know, we looked at some of the projections, we were talking 140, 145 mile-per-hour winds when it made landfall originally. The outer bands were reaching out 170 miles from it. So you think about that, if we would have had that storm make landfall with that strength, we'd have had 100, 120 mile-per-hour winds here. And I can't even fathom what it would do to the central part of North Carolina, and especially Lee County. Since we started moving forward, there were a couple things that were a little different than normal. We predominantly have not been a sheltering county. You know, the most people we'd ever had in a shelter were 58 people. When we opened the pre-event shelter on Thursday night, we saw very quickly we were going to surpass that probably before midnight, and our peak numbers were a little over 200, I think 258, I believe, in the shelter. So when you think about a shelter and taking care of 260 people, we'll use that number, it's a monumental task in itself when you start trying to keep up with everything else. So first and foremost, people will look at me like, "Why does your manager stay with you when you have these storms coming through here? Does that give you an inferiority complex?" Well, no, it does not. He's there as a buffer zone for us, and, you know, and I brag about him to other counties and to other states that we go around, that he is very proactive and not reactive. You know, we're looking downstream 48 hours, how's it going to affect our citizens and how's it going to affect our county? So, you know, from that aspect, he's there to help with that. This is my first storm with our new media relations person, Jamie Brown. So Jamie probably wanted to kill me a couple times during the four days at the EOC, but the good thing about having Jamie there, it led us to our job. We had someone that we could point them in a direction to talk to her. Her press releases were timely, they were very informative, it kept people from calling us. I got two cell phone calls the entire storm from a media outlet, and it was WRL on Channel 11. And that's very unusual, because usually it's non-stop. And so having her there, getting that information out, was very beneficial, worked great. I got to call Angelina, I thought I was going to miss, miss Miss Brenda, but we missed her. We wish she had been here with us, and I think she maybe would have wanted to be here with us, but Angelina and her team did an outstanding job. We've always been very fortunate, but maybe it's not fortunate, maybe it's having good people lined up in the right places. Betsy Bridges, the principal, and her staff at San Lee Middle School, wouldn't take anything for her. I mean, she did an excellent job, the school stayed spotless the whole time, they had the, the SROs had the shelter ease marching down the lines in there, you thought it was schools in session. Very organized, very clean, very- Very organized, very clean, very streamlined operation for a shelter. I talked to the other emergency managers around surrounding counties and heard some horror stories, and for us, they were not there. I mean, it worked great, it worked good, the SROs did a good, great job, you know, they were there, so that was very beneficial for this whole process, too. The storm itself, you know, they would tell us, okay, you're gonna have winds here Thursday at noon, then it was Thursday at eight, and then it was gonna be Friday morning. And so, this storm just kept just basically just crawling, you know, three to five mile per hour force speed and not losing a lot of energy creates a lot of, a lot of havoc for us. One thing that saved us is that we got the wind first, and then we got the rain without the wind. If it had been the other way around and we had got the rain, like you're seeing down east, and then got the wind on top of it, this would be an entirely different story here for our county right now. We would probably still have ten or fifteen thousand people without power. The outpouring of help that's come in here has been unbelievable. Many of you have seen the parking lot at Kmart, they, the former Kmart, they're feeding their people and keeping them rolling twenty-four hours a day. That was great for quick restoration, they had some transmission lines that were down that people never even heard about, lots of transmission lines. These crews went into the woods and told them, if you'll leave us alone, we'll get it back up and running, and they did. So, those things fall in place. I go to, I head out to Morris Pond yesterday morning, I see a strike team from Orange County, New York, on US One. So, you start thinking about all the different organizations that came into our area and helped North Carolina out, and that's all that part of North Carolina helping them out as well. So, let's go through some pictures right quick. So, there's the image we all were looking at on Wednesday. You can see it was kind of headed towards the North Carolina, South Carolina border. It got in, they started giving us estimates on when we were gonna have winds, and then it just kept dragging. We had our meeting with the city, the town of Broadway and the county at the EOC, we had good discussions there, we talked about what the potentials were, what we should be expecting, and then we moved forward from there. Setting that shelter up, you know, we made the phone call, we already had all of our trailers and equipment prepositioned, so Angelina and her group and the SROs and the school staff jumped in there, and literally, you know, we got over there and they had cots set up, they had the blankets out, everything was in place, and so, that was a very well-oiled machine at Sandley Middle School. The school was just, it's a great place for a shelter. Hopefully, we never use it again, but it's there if we need it. You take that gymnasium, I mean, it was amazing to me how fast they set it up and how they really made these people feel at home, you know, they're displaced from their residences, but they made them feel at home there. A lot of people in there, a lot of moving pieces of this. So, through this whole process, we had one rescue. The unique thing about this rescue, they drove off, this is at River Birch, everybody knows it floods there when we have heavy rains, three gentlemen in this truck drove off in there, Sanford Fire Department comes out, they do their protocol, they get their, you know, life vest out, their ropes, they go in, they get them, we, everyone leaves the scene, the city barricades everything off, and within about an hour, they were back over there in the creek getting their truck out. So, you know, we rescued them once, they rescued the truck the second time, so, and it was a lot higher when they went back, by the way. But the city of Sanford did a great job getting them out, they did a great job getting their truck out, so we'll move forward from there. Some of the interesting things about our county, when you start talking about rain, we had fifteen and a half inches of rain at Deep River Fire Department at the station in a rain gauge. The flooding in Deep River was limited. It's mainly along the river, as far as roadway is being flooded, it's mainly Lower River Road. Let's go to the other side of the county, where Lemon Springs got seventeen-plus inches of rain over probably a thirty-six hour period, and we had flooding everywhere. You go to the north side, we have rock, we have clay. You go to the south side, you have open fields, you have sand, and it just, it really just, it piles up, basically. What you're seeing is a breached dam. That is a very large lake, many of you have seen this, that's at Pine Forest and Cedar Lane on the left side, if you're coming into Sanford, it breached itself there. It flooded road, and we had a little bit of washout down there on Cedar Lane, so they're working on that. Another thing that was very good that we, that we, that helped us a lot, the local engineer for DOT actually stationed himself in the EOC at Moore County and never left. So, we had a phone that he would pick up, two or three rings where he had a radio he'd pick up, so we were able to report these things in. His crew was very efficient about getting barricades out, shutting roads down, but I can tell you this, one of the things we've learned from this storm is that we really need to push PSAs about telling people not to drive through standing water. They will literally get out, throw the barriers over to the side, the barricades, and drive right through it. So, we really need to work on that, because there's a lot of danger in that. So, this is the Morris Pond incident that everyone talked about. Couple of years ago, we had a storm that dumped seven inches of rain in an hour in Lemon Springs, and it flooded. One of the, we had to report it to dam safety, they came in, they recommended in the building an emergency spillway. So, that water you see flowing to the left side of the screen is the emergency spillway. So, think about this picture, six hours before that picture was taken, Rick Shear, the Assistant Chief at Lemon Springs, walked out to that pile of rock on the left side of the screen, and it was dry. The spillway was completely dry. If you see that little metal sign out there, that's on the dry side of the boat ramp that put boats in the lake. So, that lake grabs a ton of water coming across there. So, they got the emergency spillway in, by today, by this morning, it had breached, did not breach, excuse me, it overtopped, we have to use, be careful with those words, it overtopped the entire dam this morning. When we left down there yesterday, it was ninety-six inches, the creek that goes under Swan Station was ninety-six inches to the water, from the rail to the water. This morning, when I got down there, it was thirty inches. So, that's how much it had come up overnight, so we got a tremendous amount of rain last night. That water goes straight to Carolina Trace. It comes in, it joins up with the Upper Little River, and produces a lot of, a lot of water downstairs, downstairs, downstream. It's been a long week. So, some of you have seen on social media, some of you may have heard people talking about in the public, there were a lot of rumors that went around the other night that we had lost that dam, that had been breached. There were rumors that eighty-seven was shut down, that we were losing part of the lane there, the bridge, and then there were other rumors that went around that we lost the dam in Carolina Trace. So, social media will help you greatly to get information out, but bad news spreads a whole lot faster than good news. So, we learned a valuable lesson with that, you know, all it takes is one person say it breached, and then it starts, and then the phones light up, and then, you know, everybody gets really excited about it. With this incident, two things were going on, some of you may have seen BSL Lake that breached, that's Bowling Springs Lake in Brunswick County. Guess what the dam's called? The Sanford Dam.
Yeah.
So, there was a confusion. Three o'clock in the morning, the next morning after we were done there at night, Raleigh calls and says state legislators had called and said we had lost the Carolina Trace Dam in Sanford and lost the Morris Pond Dam in Sanford. And it literally took me twenty minutes to convince them that both of those were still in place and still in good shape. So, there was a confusion. People were posting pictures of the Bowling Springs Dam, which is a road that goes across it, because it breached, and were saying that that was the Carolina Trace Dam. So, you know, you see pictures. That's one of the downfalls of social media, because anybody can post anything and they are the subject matter expert when they post it. That is on the other side, that is the actual spillway that's on the other side of Morris Pond, that's a ton of water coming across there. You just don't, you can't comprehend in a picture the power of that there.
Yesterday.
That was yesterday, and that was the day before yesterday. You know, we had two, two times down there that they got a pile, but this morning was higher than any of those. There's the building again, you see that water's, it's kind of going down there. So, some of you probably had drove right where I was standing when I took that picture, that's the entrance to Carolina Trace. And so, the water came within about twenty feet of the sign out at the road for Carolina Trace, it kind of put them on an island out there. They've got emergency gates, Trace did a great job, they opened the gates up on the backside before the storm ever hit, so there wasn't a lot of confusion, you can get out the back gates. The interesting part about this is that you kind of, you got divided, there was water over Cox Mill Road at the bridge, so if you were going on the south side, you had to go back to Harnett County to get around. If you're trying to get on the north side, you had to come in on Cox Mill. So, that created some interesting times this morning, but tremendous amount of water coming in there. That is the bridge at eighty-seven, it was blowing out from under there like a chute this morning, I mean, it literally was a lot of water flowing through, high flow volume. Sure, most of y'all have driven down this road, that's Cox Mill Road, looking towards the bridge behind Carolina Trace, it was completely overrun this morning. The water basically went from the bridge back towards four twenty-one, and then there's a picture of the bridge, and then there's a house down there that fields, so the water, I'm sure that's got water damage in it, the water got up around the house out there. Lot of water moving through there. That's from the Harnett County side of the bridge. There again, I saw water today in places I've never seen it. Steel Bridge Road, the Moore County, Lee County line was underwater, the bridge was underwater out there. That is the detour route for the Carverton Road Dam Project, so, you know, a lot of places we've seen it. We probably have lost dams on probably three or four ponds, a lot of it's down in Lemon Springs, there's one over in Broadway, and basically, I think I've got a picture, that's another picture of Trace. So, this is how it starts when you lose a dam, and I don't have an after picture, because it never got really bad there, but it starts to run over the top, and it's just like taking a knife and cutting hot butter. It will cut into it, and the faster it flows, the more it digs, and you end up losing these, these bodies of water. We lost that dam this afternoon, that's Hidden Pond down off Edwards Road. If you look in there where it's overwashing, go to the other end, that's near the drain pipe, it cut itself down there, and it cut a groove in the dam about four feet deep, so it will continue to cut, but nothing downstream, no one's in harm's way, and they have another way they can go around on the top side of the lake and get out, but that was a big concern last night. The water's actually, was, that's down compared to what we saw last night during the rainstorm. All of that's upstream of Morris Pond. All of this water you're seeing goes straight to Morris Pond. And then I'll open it up for any questions you may have.
Shane, do y'all have any out-of-town folks in your shelters?
Yes, not in our shelter. We had a shelter that opened up at the Armory, that was, that was run by the North Carolina National Guard, North Carolina Emergency Management, and the Red Cross, so they actually relocated evacuees from Craven County, and I think so, there were some in there from New Bern that came down. The shelter capacity, like, went from zero to a hundred and fifty very quickly there, they're at fifty this afternoon. But the, most of the people that were in our shelter, we did have a few come from, called from other counties that had, did not open a pre-event shelter up, wanting to come here, which we will not turn anybody away.
Since when I came by, there was a buzz picking a few more people up.
Yeah.
So, there are any other armed?
The state will definitely have to look at the Crest Plan, this relocation from coastal communities, we've never had a storm that had an impact path that large. The Crest relocation areas are like Johnston County, Wake County, this storm impacted those areas, so you gotta take care of your own people and try to take care of the other communities as well.
I thank Heath and his folks as well, for the mention.
They did a great job, we had an animal shelter up, co-location shelter for pets, we had eight pets, that went well, for the most part. So, if nothing else, I mean, it's good on the job training, Sheriff's Department, Health Department, Animal Control worked really good on that. Just, I mean, yeah, there's things that we can fix, that we'll make better, but all in all, I think we were very fortunate here for the amount of damage we had and the way that the operation ran.
Well, just to inform the board while we're on the subject, first of all, Shane did a phenomenal job.
We did a phenomenal job.
As did John, and personal thanks to Jamie and to Whitney. We would, we would show up at the shelter, you know, no power, no, no electricity home and stuff, but still had a good time, and Jennifer was always on call and ready to come in. Angelina, you and your staff when I was at the shelters, everybody just had great things to say. As a matter of fact, I think the sheriff posted a picture, the elderly woman that was on there, she told me, she said, "They've taken such good care of me," she said, "I'm gonna be the last one to leave." You know, so she, she, she felt at home and comfortable. Heath, you and your staff as well, I, I knew that all the folks in our shelter were in just fantastic hands, and, and they, they were, I mean, just in a great mood for all things considered and, and taking things in stride. Our sheriff and our SROs, every time I was at the EOC, the sheriff was there, you know, everybody was pretty much working twenty-hour days, I think. The General Services, Russell, had us up and ready to go. And, and lastly, the school system, you know, when the, the school, you know, they shared their food with the shelters when it started, people started coming in so fast, and the Red Cross didn't anticipate us having that many people that fast, and, and the school system said, "Well, we have food in the freezers," you know, and sent folks, I think, to cook, you know? Yeah, so, you know, I mean, that, that's just another example of the teamwork we've got in this county. And I just, just, just from my standpoint and for the board's behalf, you know, I never felt nervous, I never felt like we were in over our heads, we were ready, you know, and when this thing started happening, everybody just performed a hundred percent, nobody complained, everybody worked together, and I'm so proud of everybody, you know, Shane did a great job organizing all of us, and, and John just keeping us.
Straight.
Straight. Exactly. So, I, I just appreciate the teamwork and how well everything went. We have some things to iron out, and, and we've got a lot of things to repair, but we fared so much better than, than we thought we were going to originally, so, but thank you.
Got a lot to be proud for.
Yes, we do.
One, I would also thank the public, you know, the curfew was, there were some complaints, but.
Right.
Streets were pretty bare, I mean.
They were, that helped us tremendously during the night.
Yeah, I thought that was very impressive. At nine o'clock on Thursday night, there was hardly any traffic going up and down there.
Just line trucks.
Yeah.
Everywhere.
I thought that was.
Well, I know, you know, and I know some people weren't happy with that, but I'll paraphrase, I don't know, you know, Mayor Colvin in Fayetteville, he, and I'm gonna paraphrase him, but, you know, in talking about the curfews, he said, you know, "If we hit it too hard with the curfews," he said, "I can deal with that." But, you know, to, to not let people know that it's unsafe and they should be at home and put that curfew in, and, and somebody lose their life, he said, "I, I can't deal with that." So, you know, I think that's the perspective we came at, and, and obviously, the roads have been unsafe. And to your point, as we talk about, you know, especially removing the barriers, I know right before I came to the meeting, of course, Rosser Pittman Road is in Harnett County, but it's just kind of over the line, there, it's extremely flooded there at the creek, and they had some individuals that removed the barrier and drove through, got swept way into the woods, and, and the EMS folks had to go out, I mean, just, you know, about four o'clock this afternoon. So, you know, people, please realize that when you do that, you put our EMS folks at risk, and, and plus, you take the time doing something foolish, and, and our EMS folks have to go out when they could be dealing with somebody that really, you know, needed help, so, my public service announcement for the day. Anything else? Thank you so much, Shane.
Thank you.
Get some rest.
Okay.
Next, under All Business, the presentation on Project Thin Slice, so Mr. Downey. There you are. I knew you were here. So, on page ninety-four of your agenda.
Good evening, members of the chair, members of the board. I am here tonight to give you a, and it just disappeared on.
Sorry, I had him shut in, and I thought about it.
So, John had asked me to come to speak to you all tonight, I'll be very brief, but I did want to kind of give you a, a little bit of an update and talk to you a little bit about something that you participated with the city on back in the spring. I gave this update to the city council a couple of weeks ago, and so, I'm just gonna kind of jump right in here. I think everyone's probably familiar with Project Thin Slice and the proposal that DSI received from Rehab Development out of Raleigh. This was received by DSI, originally kind of approached them in the fall of twenty seventeen, as you can see here, I just kind of pulled this from one of their letterheads, and you can see that's just kind of a summary of what they had approached DSI about doing, and this is the property at five thirteen Wicker Street, it's kind of generally known as the old tobacco warehouse down on, on Wicker. So, with that, subsequent to that and following up on that, the, and I apologize, it's a little bit small here, but Rehab put together a much more formal proposal after that initial consult. But Rehab put together a much more formal proposal after that initial consultation. And they put together basically what they wanted to do in terms of taking that old tobacco warehouse and turn it into a combination of apartments and retail space. And so what I tried to pull out there is a highlighted, kind of what were some of the key components to that. And again, I apologize, it's a little bit small there. But you can see that there were three asks, if you will, of the local government. And this is really kind of where it jumps in here with both you all and well as the city. And so again, before I jump into that, essentially, what you're looking at here, this was what they had proposed in terms of what their investment would be. It would be 9.3 million, 41 residential units, 8,000 square foot of commercial space, and roughly 50, give or take, parking spaces. This is what they were going to do on a portion of the old tobacco warehouse site. And you can kind of see from the arrow view here, it was really kind of what's highlighted in the green and then the red for the parking at the back there. So when we, when the DSI received that pro forma and with that, with that information in there and with those asks, part of that, as I indicated, was a request basically for the city to look at and the county to look at a non-forgivable loan and a 95% tax abatement along with the historic tax credits. So immediately, I think the staff of both the city and county level had some yellow flags, if not the red flags, come up about that ask. And so we were looking at ways that we could be responsive and kind of take that information and properly vet that, if you will. Make sure that we were being responsive before we even approached you all with any kind of ask like that. And what we thought about was to use the UNC School of Government's Development Finance Initiative. This is kind of right in their wheelhouse. This is kind of what they do for local governments. And so we went to them and asked them to put together a proposal. They came back in the spring of 2018. And we submitted in front of both you and the city. It was a cost of $13,000. They would take the full pro forma as submitted by Rehab and take a look at that, review it, and give us, the city and county, as well as DSI, an analysis of what they thought was fair, what was reasonable, and what you could expect with that. And so for you as the county and the city, you both agreed to participate in that. And you split the costs at 6,500 apiece. And so in April, late April of 2018, they completed that analysis and that study. And they presented their findings to staff, both city-county staff as well as the DSI folks. And I'm going to quickly jive over this. I'm not going to go into detail. You do have the full results of that PowerPoint and that presentation that they made in your packet. And I'll certainly try to answer any questions you have. And I'm going to kind of hit the highlights of that for you tonight. So again, this was some of the assumptions that were made by the Rehab folks and what they were going to do. They were going to have half a million in land acquisition. They were going to have 6 million in hard cost and another 2.2 in soft cost for the project. That's where you get to the 9.3 that we talked about earlier. And then their sources, and this is really the important piece of this, is you can see they were looking at 20% coming from cash, 12% coming from the federal historic tax credits, 15% coming from the state historic tax credits, 4% from deferred development fees, and then another 49% in the construction loan. So within that, kind of piece of that down below there is where they were looking at some of the abatement and some of that 650,000 forgivable loan from the city to county. So again, this is just to reiterate, these were the three asks. The top one would be from the city, of course, because they're the ones to grant historic landmark status. The city and the county would provide a performance grant or forgivable loan of 650,000. And then a 95% tax abatement on all city-county and municipal service district taxes for a period of 10 years. So a pretty heavy ask. So that's what we asked DFI to specifically look at, was to take a look at that and see if that was reasonable, more or less. Some of the assumptions that they made based on the proposal or the pro forma that was submitted is that they, what they came at, what, I'm not saying this correctly. When they performed the analysis, some of the concerns that they had, and one of the things that they looked at is they felt like the income projections for rental and commercial were too low in the pro forma as performed by Rehab. And their other concern was that the city or the county providing interest-earning loan rather than a grant. They didn't think it was reasonable to ask you all to just give 650,000. They felt like it would be more reasonable to do it from a low-interest loan standpoint. And the other thing they had real heartburn over was the 95% tax deferment. Basically, the abatement on the taxes. They didn't feel comfortable with that. So, and again, I'm taking a lot of that that you have in that full presentation and kind of pulling this together here. So what DFI was suggesting, maybe as an alternative to what Rehab had submitted, was to increase their overall rents by 7%. Rehab had a premium of 33%, DFI suggested 42%. And when I say that, now keep in mind, they've got some information in your full packet. They're basing that on what they felt like the market, what they, when they started looking at our market, what they felt like those rental rates would be. And they felt like maybe Rehab had lowballed that a little bit. And then again, Rehab Commercial was shown at $10 per square foot per year, whereas DFI had suggested you go up to $15 per square foot per year. With downtown, and again, their downtown comp range from 13 to 18 based on professional analysis that they had looked at. So that's key because by increasing those rental rates, some of the assumptions that Rehab was making to make their return hurdles, which is essentially how they were going to make the project work, without the public participation, they were looking at needing 8% and 12%, 8% yield and cost and 12% internal rate of return. What you're looking at down below there is if you did some of the asks that they were talking about. So if the city were to grant them the landmark status only and not the other things, they would get 7% and 11%, where they wouldn't make their target. But if you did that along with the $650,000 loan, you would, you'll see that they're in the green status. Now again, the key to that is you'll notice at the very top, this includes increasing the residential and commercial rents. If you go back and look at that, without that, if you go with the rents that they had to begin with, they wouldn't hit any of this without that additional abatement. So what this does is it eliminates the request for the 95% abatement. It puts in a $650,000 loan with a 5% interest for 10 years versus a grant. And it also assumes the city would grant them the tax credit status. So it's kind of a compromise. It gives them part of what they were asking for. So keep that in mind. So that information was given back to DSI. I think they negotiated with Rehab from that point on. And I think what we were looking at at that time from a staff perspective to see how they might counter, what would they come back with? Would they be willing to accept that? My understanding, I'm talking with Jennifer, and I certainly know Steve's here too. If he can jump in here if he wants to add any comments, is from a DSI perspective. But I don't think that the discussions progressed far enough along to really change anything with Rehab at this time. So knowing that, I think what DSI has looked to is has been working with Mr. Crumpton, perhaps you as the board as well. I'm not sure how much has been disclosed. It's my understanding that they certainly made a request. You have a copy of the letter on page 120 of your packet from DSI requesting that the county do consider granting a loan to DSI from Golden Leaf that would allow them to take control of the property. Right now, the property's in Rehab's hands through an option. My understanding, that option is supposed to end tomorrow if he doesn't make another payment on it. And then this would allow DSI to move forward if the county were to grant them access to the Golden Leaf money. It's my understanding too that the Golden Leaf has approved the county's use of the ponds if you so chose that you wanted to do that. And I'll pause there if there's questions.
John, you want to wag in on that?
Yes, we just, you know, in discussing this with DSI, you know, there was a need or a desire to take control of the building. Make sure that it just wasn't turned into warehouse space or something like that since it's a critical piece to the city's revitalization effort along Wicker Street there. So we had not made any loans out of the Golden Leaf Fund except to Saga. They have one payment left in January, so we have 850,000 or so dollars left in that fund. And so we haven't had a lot of interest in it. So I made this suggestion to DSI that if they wanted to gain control of the building, that we could approach the Board of Commissioners about a loan. So to go through the loan process, you know, obviously, the county attorney would have to draw up a loan and a deed of trust, and then we would have to have a public hearing before we could consider it. So to get comments on it. Plus, we'd have to do some waiving of our policy because right now, the policy that the board passed has some contradictions to doing a loan like this and the amount of money. So, you know, this is kind of our first step discussing this tonight. It's actually a pretty exciting proposal when you consider taking a building and, you know, creating something that would generate a lot of interest and a lot of revenue. And I really wasn't all that excited about the 95% abatement and the forgivable loan because that was basically 100% plus over a 10-year period. And so I was just trying to give the DSI board another option to make this deal work.
What is intended use by DSI to take over this same Rehab?
I can't answer other than say I think it would be something similar. Probably, you know, whether they would partner with Rehab or whether they were partnering with somebody else. But it would be some type of mixed-use project I would be...
They want to basically find a developer. There are other developers besides this group that does this type of project. And, you know, if they have control of the building, they can market it. They also have, parts of the building right now are already generating revenue. The building has been refurbished in certain areas, and they have two tenants. So they would have revenue, plus the downtown San Franinc has revenue from the city. So the idea is while they're trying to market it for 24 months or so, there's no payments. And then after 24 months, payments would start. And, you know, pay the loan back over a 10-year period. And, you know, they have the rent to help make those payments. So it's really a, pretty much a risk-free, as a risk-free loan as we can get and out of the revolving loan fund.
I believe 200,000 for the rest of the county.
330. 330.
330?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, in the revolving loan, if we would do this one?
I thought they would, I thought you said 850 and 650 is what they wanted.
Yes.
At this point, at this point, the loan...
Saga's a payment.
And all, the option on the building right now is at 500,000. So that would, if we gave a loan, that'd be about in the ballpark. A lot of things still need to be discussed. They have to get an option to purchase. You know, if the deal falls through tomorrow, then DSI's got to jump in and try to, you know, get an option on the property. So there's a lot of hoops to jump through for them. But this just gives them an opportunity to try to get control of the building.
We just wanted to have this presentation tonight since the contract goes up tomorrow. You may need to revisit this in October.
There probably needs to be more of a discussion about the Golden Leaf Foundation loan or this loan process, especially after going through what we've just weathered, this storm and all, for other small business people. Just, I guess, refresh their memory or make it better known that it's available.
Any questions for motion?
Thank you.
Okay, we have, moving down to item D on all business, the consideration of proposed facility use policy for Lee County Park-Sonrec. Mr. Crumpton?
Yes, I inherited this issue. With the purchase of the Family Park and Broadway, the county began a process of allowing groups to rent our facilities for recreation programming. So as you know, we made our first initial contract with Broadway Baseball. They approached us, really wanted a long-term agreement. And as part of that long-term agreement, they would make improvements to the facilities and that type of stuff. After reviewing that request and going through other jurisdictions, policies and procedures that really isn't how others do it, and you can see why. Because if you're trying to open up the fields to multiple groups to use it, if you basically end up with an exclusive deal with someone because they're improving your property, that kind of shuts people out. So we came up with this general-purpose policy to place that organizations can rent facilities for a single event or for a long-term season, so to speak. So if someone wanted to operate fall baseball coming up, they can come in, make application with Parks and Rec, and they could use it for that season. If they need it for multiple seasons, they need to make multiple requests so that we can get them on the schedule. It's really more of a seasonal request now instead of a long-term, you know, multi-year request. And there's a 100% deposit at time of reservation. For private programs, remember, there's nonprofits and there are for-profits. And sometimes there's not a whole lot of a difference in the two. But there is, most jurisdictions have a preference for the nonprofits first since they're hopefully trying to do it for the best of the community. There's a single-event registration also, like a day event. So if somebody wanted to use a ball field to hold a benefit softball tournament or something, they could do that. Or if they wanted to hold a one-day tournament, they could do that as well. So it also covers the requirement for insurance. It allows me to sign these contracts on behalf of the county. Allows sponsors to provide concessions, set out certain restrictions. This will have to be worked out with each group. You know, if they wanted to offer concessions at our concession stands, how we would do that. Because that can get, as Mr. Payne will attest, that can get a little messy. And so the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board did review the policies and priority classification system and unanimously recommended approval to the county commissioners. Ms. Parris, don't need to add anything else?
Just that there's another form in there, that enhancement form that if the sponsor wanted to make any kind of improvements to the facilities. There's a form in there that kind of sets out the rules for that as well.
So that we're, you know, they're not just going in and making improvements. We have to approve whatever improvements they're going to make.
So what does that mean for Broadway Baseball?
So right now, Broadway Baseball wants to run fall ball. So they would have to come in, make application with Parks and Rec, give the dates, times, you know, that they would be using the field and reservations. And then they would be charged, you know, to use the field. And we would maintain those fields.
And going forward, do they have the first right to agree up before somebody else does, per se, or...?
It's actually first come, first served.
Can you lease it, per se, for several seasons, like, or is it one year at a time?
We prefer to do it a season at a time. Fall, winter, spring. Now, if they were somehow come in there and say, "Well, we're going to commit to this schedule for an entire year, and this is the schedule and this is the program," we would have to consider that if they did that. There aren't many athletic programs right now that aren't seasonal. Most of them run through the seasons.
I was going to ask you about, I'm looking through regulations. They do and we do. One they do is not allow the sale of alcohol on the premises. Who regulates what we're asking them to do?
Parks and Rec makes sure that the leasing makes sure that they do what they're supposed to.
You know, I think alcohol need to also add drugs. You know, we don't, I don't think we want drugs being sold there at the same time, you know, what we have in ballgame.
Well, that's covered by the state law, so. We weren't going to reiterate the drugs thing. But, you know, there are, you know, you can buy alcohol, you know. And so we just wanted to make sure they clearly understood that alcohol was prohibited at our facilities.
How about the, I noticed it says that, you know, they do their own dragging and all this. Do they do that?
Yes, sir. Broadway Baseball is doing their own dragging right now in between games. That way, we don't have to have somebody out there all the time.
Well, I was looking at your rates as a reason I was asking that because with those rates, you're not, you're going to go into old if you have to keep... if you have to keep people under the drag of fields every time.
We cut the grass, we'll line them. But during the days and that kind of stuff, if they have an all-day event, they would have to drag the fields and line them, reline them. And they have access to that stuff.
I have one question, just from some comments from some Broadway citizens. On page 151 of our agenda, on number three, it says, "No programs are permitted between dawn and dusk, otherwise specified and approved in the application." And I know, you know, the Lett Park is a little bit different because it is right on top of residential area. But, you know, when the county took control of that park, the residents were interested in, you know, some type of regulation. I'm looking at Mr. Payne over in the podium. You know, there have been times in the past when the lights have been on and games have been going on at 10:00, 10:30 at night and on school nights. You know, and so will the dawn to dusk cover that? And how does the dawn to dusk work, like for day tournaments sake? I'm just.
This is the single event registrations, reservations, so.
Okay, I'm sorry. You're right.
We do allow the vault, you know, teams to have night programs under the lights.
Is there a time limit, though? I didn't see that anywhere in our rules.
We have limitations. We have an 11:00 PM curfew.
Okay.
We have 11:00 PM. I thought it was 11 o'clock.
It's in Dakota Hornets.
Okay. So my answer to them would be just, it's just going to stay on late?
At that time.
Your answer is call John Payne.
Bear in mind, I was just. All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Any more questions or discussion? All those in favor of Lee County Parks and Recreation Advisor, excuse me, the Lee County Parks and Recreation Facility Use Policy, say aye. Aye opposed? Thank you. Okay, item E, and you have that abstract at your seat. The consideration of instructing staff to enter into negotiations and a fee arrangement with a national firm to represent the county in the opioid litigation. Not sure if it's Ms. Parrish, Mr. Crumpton.
His one's not mine.
I mentioned.
Got several names on the list here.
Just wrote them all. As you all are well aware, that starting back, I guess it was in the spring really, is when we started having the discussions about potentially entering into the opioid litigation. Throughout the process, we did hear presentations from two national law firms. One was the McHugh Fuller Law Firm, and the second was the Simmons Hanley Conroy Firm. After the presentations that they had given, we placed this back on the agenda at the last board meeting in August in order for the board to determine, make the determination as to whether or not they, A, wanted to enter into the litigation, or B, if they did, if they wanted to engage a firm to represent the county. At that time, I provided some information that I was able to gather from the different departments. And then it was requested that I submit that information to you all, which hopefully you all can get that in email sometime that week after the board meeting. And then thankfully, Heath's staff has also been keeping some numbers and doing some research. So I'm still trying to track as much of the information as I can and just kind of save it and keep it in a folder as we move forward still. But at this time, since the item has now been taken off the table, if the board wishes to move forward, then just wait for a motion to be had so I can start communications with the law firms.
Okay, discussion or questions?
So did you find out any information at the NCACC conference?
We had a lot of discussions. Our seminars and workshops mainly dealt more with, you know, just dealing with the issue. But we did touch a little bit on the litigation. More of my conversations came outside of the workshops, of course, talking to other counties and talking to the council for the association. You know, you've got about half the counties, you know, going with one law firm, another, well, a third going with one law firm, a third going with another law firm, and a third still kind of out there waiting. And of course, the association is following what the attorney general's doing from the state side. But, you know, as I talked with the manager, you know, if we take part in the litigation, you know, at least, for lack of a better term, we'll have our foot in the door. You know, and our county will be part of it. And that, you know, my concern, I think I've shared with everybody here, is this is so reminiscent of the tobacco settlement. And that money did not go where it was supposed to go in this state. It did in other states, but not in this one. So that was my concern, that, but, you know, if we're part of the litigation, then, you know, we'll be part of a judge's determination in a settlement for an award.
You're going to always, in this situation, probably be at the mercy of the General Assembly. But if you're not in the game at all, you're already out.
That's right. That's exactly right. And that's the discussion that we had at the meeting in Hickory was, and I think that it wasn't that the other counties weren't going to participate. You know, they were just taking a little bit more time, but.
Will we go on with the firm that employed or enlisted a local firm here?
The McHugh Fuller Farm. McHugh Fuller Farm.
You make a motion, you got it there. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion if we go to McHugh, with the McHugh Fuller Farm. I'm Chair. I made a motion that we go to, with the McHugh Fuller Farm and the local people.
Can just authorize the legal department to enter into negotiations for a fee arrangement? That also be part of.
I like your motion better.
And back in somewhere over there.
Yeah, yeah.
Just take that motion.
Right, right. We need, yeah, Commissioner Odom, if you just amend your motion to not only go with that firm, but to authorize staff to negotiate the fees and contract. Okay? Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, I move with the McHugh Fuller Group. And I also move to instruct staff to gather data on how the opioid epidemic has affected Lee County before any suit is filed on behalf of Lee County.
Any more questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Is everybody good? Okay, all right, the next item, we're skipping item A. We put that on consent under new business, so it'll be item B, the value-added agricultural cluster report summary, Mr. Stone. Hello? Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Wilmann-Downrapple, county bishop. Yes, ma'am, thanks, Wilmann.
And I will say, I neglected when I was thanking folks about the hurricane response. Mr. Stone, Dr. Stone, excuse me, Dr. Stone and his staff were at the animal shelter. And so they got things ready for animal control to come in and the health department to assess.
Sure, we were glad to assist.
Thanks for looking after the animals. Appreciate it. And everything's all cleaned up.
Yep, everything's looking good.
Good deal.
So thank you for having me here tonight. As you might have noticed on the agenda, Bob Joyce was with me. But Bob unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. He was called away out of town to a meeting, so I'm going to cover some of his parts. Now, I'm not an expert economic developer, but I'm going to do what I can. And I, kind of a little bit of background here is this is a project that Saga was really working on in conjunction, of course, with the county commissioners a couple of years ago when this feasibility study was launched to really determine if it was going to be feasible to look at value-added agriculture and supporting that initiative in Lee County. So this is really a summary of a pretty exhaustive report that you have in your packet, I think about 70 or 80 pages. And I'm going to try to get this into about 10 minutes. I don't want to move too fast, but I want to get through it so we'll have some time for questions and hitting the highlights here. I did also want to recognize, I know we have a few Lee County farmers here with us tonight, so we appreciate them being here and their support of this project as well. So starting off here, this is, of course, a cluster project with Chatham, Harnett, Lee, and Johnston Counties right now, so there's four of us. Sampson was originally involved in the initial talks, but kind of backed out after the project got moving. This is a proposal and a project that Ted Abernathy worked on and put together with his group Economic Leadership. And a lot of these slides are going to be modifications of what they used to put together. So I'll go ahead and get into it here. First slide, and again, this is just going to give you an overview of that report. This gives you a little picture graph, a little pie chart of where our industrial employment and our occupational employment is currently in agriculture. And keep in mind that these statistics are really going to cover this four-county cluster region. As you see, about 5% in industry employment in agriculture, and then in occupational employment, only about 2% out of that 98% pie. In the region, you can see Johnston and Lee have the overwhelming piece of that in the agriculture industry employment by county at almost 80%. And the next slide will kind of show you what that's broken up into. I'm sorry, the slide after that. This gives you an idea of where the assets are located throughout this four-county region. As you can see, in Lee County, heavily along that 421 corridor up through there, the orange is processing and the blue is in distribution. Now, of course, in a study that covers such magnitude, we weren't able to put down all the farms, all the ag businesses. These are going to be a lot of the major processing and distributing as it relates to potential value-added gaps or where there might be opportunities in this cluster. And then you can see Johnston has a large number, as well as Lee County, all in that corridor. Chatham's kind of spread around and the same with Harnett County. Now, as you get into the breakdown with the blue in farming, the red in processing, and the green in distribution, you can see down in Lee County overwhelmingly is going to be processing. A lot of that's, of course, going to be related to Pilgrims, Tysons, some of those are larger processing as well. You get into Johnston County, you've got a lot in processing and also a lot in farming there. Our farming number's a little bit smaller, but again, those are not all the farms counted that we have in Lee County. But it kind of gives you a representation of where we stand. Big project sectors, and this was taken out of Southern Business and Development. I want you to pay particular attention to the second graph, or the third and fourth graph on the left side, the food and beverage. You see in 2012, there was about 36 projects that had at least 200 million new jobs or $300 million in new investment. And by 2007, that jumped up to 73 in food and beverage alone. So what we've been able to see through some of these trends is that's a really hot area and an area that we can potentially tap into. And that's where food manufacturing would fit into in this scheme. This gives you an idea of what a typical value agricultural chain looks like. Some folks, we hear that term "value-added" a lot, but what actually does that mean? Well, value-added, just to simplify it, really means taking a raw material and enhancing the material value of it. And that can be anything from chopping, peeling, freezing, canning, juicing, packaging, roasting, drying, or extracting. It gives a raw product greater economic value. And this just gives you an idea of what that chain might look like. Production, harvest and transporting, processing and storage, secondary processing, distribution, package handling, and then wholesale and retail markets. So is there a reasonable chance of increasing value-added agriculture in this four-county region? And what are the goals for these counties? Well, of course, by taking advantage of a perceived asset that we already have here, recognizing the agricultural strength and history we have, growing job opportunities, the potential to expand the economy in the county, as well as supporting some existing agriculture businesses, preserving, protecting, and celebrating the history and the lifestyle of what made this cluster great and what really makes Lee County great with that agricultural heritage. And that was interesting. That was something that we really heard repeated throughout the conversations with this group. Folks in these four counties really saw value in the history and wanted to make sure agriculture was continually pushed up to the forefront. Because sometimes folks forget that really that's what many of these counties were based on. And it's still such a strong economic engine here. So really, the findings based on some of the information gathered is that there is a good opportunity. The components of a successful value-added agriculture structure exist. But currently, there's not, the resources aren't there and the collaborative capacity isn't quite there. So that's what I'm going to talk about in just a second. Also, we, of course, face significant and rising competition. So what do we have here that's appealing as far as our value-added checklist goes? Well, logistics are great. We have companies that need a robust logistics network. Products can get all over the world quickly. Producers need affordable, consistent, reliable sources of energy. We also have that. Of course, we're close to an agricultural research university, NC State, I like to give the plug there, but also A&amp;T and some of our other fine universities in the area. A state, local business climate that's extremely business-friendly, of course, we have that. One of the issues we have, of course, is an available and affordable workforce. And that's something that we can look at addressing. And also shovel-ready greenfield land. So those may be two of the challenges that we look at across the four counties. Of course, a workforce and site, available and ready sites. So getting down to the recommendations, and this is kind of an overview, and then I'll talk a little bit more specifically about what some of the recommendations might look like over about a one- to three-year period. So it would start with the four counties really agreeing that this is something that they wanted to move forward with and put some investment towards. It would take targeted recruitment, supporting some of the existing agricultural enterprises, of course, building synergy, communication, and excitement between stakeholders, and also explore supportive legislation. See if there's the opportunity for some of our folks at the state level to look at this as potentially a pilot project, something that these four counties could get going and maybe look at some tax breaks or something along those lines and be a model for some of our other counties across the state to look into. Of course, any effort like this can't be something that's embarked upon solely. It's got to be a collaborative effort with other organizations. Cooperative extension, of course, would be involved, Farm Bureau, NCDAs. Central Carolina and Johnston Community College also have strong agricultural programs and other groups that are already supporting farming and businesses and ag business in our area. So what might recommendations look like in year one? Create a steering committee of stakeholders in developing a three-year action plan. Identify and align these efforts with other ongoing activities that may already be going on, similar to the Central Corridor manufacturing effort. As I mentioned before, looking at our legislators, looking at what support might be there. Beginning discussion or focus groups with local ag businesses to see issues, opportunities, and of course synergies there. And then develop and maintain continuously updated joint website. Of course, that virtual presence is going to be so critical in getting the word out. Continuing on with year one, reaching out to other funding organizations. See about the possibility of Golden Leaf support in a project like this. I believe Triangle J Council has already put forth a proposal that y'all have probably looked over to do this very thing. What they're proposing is looking at the possibility of a one-year deliverable for a total cost of $22,500. And they would designate a principal planner, a planner too, and engagement specialists to this project.
Under the category of reaching out to, like, Golden Leaf, what type of funding amount would you be looking for?
Well, I think it depends. I guess it depends on the outset of what counties are willing to put in for this startup project.
Well, the Golden Leaf Foundation, I've applied for the, they have a value-added grant. They don't fund it every year, but they did for like three or four years in a row. I applied for it three different times. You could get, depending on how the grant's structured, up to half million dollars. An individual farmer could. But what they look for, and one of the criteria that I kept falling back on is they want participation among multiple farms. If you wrote a grant for, I think one of them that was funded. If you wrote a grant for, I think one of them that was funded in the county was, an example, was like the truffle industry or Christmas trees or something. I included additional farmers, like Gary, you know, for his strawberries and making strawberry wine, and the one that I kept applying for. And, you know, it's like everything else. You have to have connections to get the grants.
Well, we're asking because we just talked about the Golden Leaf and the money available, and that others might have a need for it. That was all.
That would be a good way to utilize that loan.
That's correct.
And that's one of the things we've talked about in our meetings, is if the four counties go in together, we have a better chance of getting a loan from Golden Leaf.
We don't want a loan from Golden Leaf.
I mean, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, pardon me.
We want free money.
Yes, thank you for the correction. We just want the check. Yes.
Been sitting too close to Robert. He's been sitting too close to you talking about free money.
And I think, Commissioner Reeves, that was something that was mentioned in one of the presentations that Ted gave, is the regional or this cluster approach really looks a lot stronger when you're looking at Golden Leaf for grant money. So I definitely think this would be a viable approach for additional monies for kickstarting.
And other, I'm sorry, Bill.
That's a split four-way cost, too.
Right, the $22,500. But other, you know, we also talked about other foundations and that kind of thing, not just Golden Leaf. And so, you know, with the four of us together, we hope would open a lot more doors.
So, you know, the early conversations at these meetings with the other counties, everybody seems pretty excited about it and the possibilities there. They want to support agriculture. It seemed to be a question of what group would really come together to facilitate this, and I think that's where the Council of Government stepped in, because they have experience in this and is really willing to take the lead, and I know y'all have that request. So year two, and this gives an example of what it might look like as you move forward to the next phase. A lot of this is going to be, you know, in the economic development realm, but I think target marketing, where you're attracting food processing businesses, going to trade shows, you know, actually making contacts and sharing what we do have here, while we are an attractive place for food manufacturing. A social media campaign, food processing legislation, once again, that comes into play, and then the public-private partnership. Year three, a little bit further long-term, sustain and expand the marketing efforts and really drill down with direct calls, 20 to 30 national companies, in addition to continuing to hit the trade shows and really letting folks know that this is something we're serious about in reaching out to these companies. So that is really the abbreviated version. I'd be glad to answer any questions, the best I could, that y'all may have about this project.
So as far as, just like local involvement from the farming community, I mean, have you had discussions and you feel pretty good about participation?
Yeah, I think so, and that's, we have shared some of this information with our farming community. One of the things that I think is important to remember, and I asked Ted this a couple of times, is we want to make sure if this is something that we embark on, that we don't forget our local agricultural folks. A lot of the conversations that I noticed in these meetings were very tied to, you know, recruitment, to going out there and identifying groups, bringing in companies, and I guess the fear there potentially could be is if a company comes in, they have their own suppliers, their own, you know, folks that they're using. And that would really be something, I think, that would come down to the board as they're looking at potentially incentives or whatever it may come to, to emphasize that we really would like these companies to be focused here locally on what our farmers can grow, what they can produce. So it really is, it's a win-win, I think, in that way. So it's not just a company coming in and buying from whoever they buy from, you know, regularly across the country. We'd really like to have that added piece, or hopefully be able to include that piece, that there is some sort of incentive or some way to promote and to push them from looking local first, because I know our guys here, if there's a market, they can grow it. There's no question about that, especially when you go to a regional approach like this in this area we're in, there's a lot of value-added possibility.
We've been working on this for, gosh, Bill, three years now, you know, and now that we've got the Triangle J Cog involved, I think that, you know, ramped things up and helped us out some, you know. I think, and that's one of the things that's funny, how the land use plan and this have kind of crossed over with each other, because as we were going to the land use plan meetings, you know, we were hearing people over and over again say they didn't want to kind of lose our countryside and our ag. You know, they like living in a community where they can drive by a field or, you know, sea forest or whatever. So this just dovetailed nicely as these things have come together at the same time. But you're right, one of the things in our initial meetings we were talking about is, you know, some of our farmers here, you know, when you talk about bringing a value-added company in, and I'm just going to, off the top of my head, like a bird's eye, you know, that would have strawberries that they would want to bring in and freeze, you know, the volume that they would need, it really would take, you know, a regional supply for them to be able to do what they want to do. But I know, and correct me if I've got the wrong county, but I think, was it a farmer in Johnston County that was having to truck his peas to Ohio to be frozen?
Might be right, yeah.
And, you know, and that company would love to cite here if it knew that, you know, it could get the supply that it had. So just what we think of as perishables, you know, fruits and vegetables, that kind of thing, that's just part of the puzzle, because the other, you know, other things that are happening that are really exciting in agriculture right now, and it's not just sort of a typical processing plant that we have in our mind, while those are very valuable and play a part in our economic engine in the county. But, you know, biofuels are really coming on strong, and the partnership that we could have with NC State to bring companies in with biofuels that are great jobs with really good wages. The other thing is with the Plant Science Center opening at State in two years, I preach this all the time, but I don't think people quite understand the game changer that's going to be. That's going to be a global center for plant research and development, and that in and of itself will bring interest to our area. So if we have this region set up, then I think our farmers will be in a really good place. Farming's going to change a lot in the next five to 10 years, and we're trying to be proactive and set things up for our farm families so that they'll have the same type of support that our other businesses have as far as marketing is concerned and reaching out for assistance. That kind of sum up what we've been doing.
I think you hit the nail on the head, and I think, you know, with the assets we have, with the plant sciences coming online, with, you know, so many things changing so quickly in agriculture, now is the time to stay ahead of the curve, and now is the time. It sounds like this is the sweet spot we're going into for this type of industry, and, you know, based on the trends that were shown through this study, it's a good time to get in, and I think these four counties are committed, so I'm excited about the opportunity, and hopefully y'all will be too. And any other questions y'all have, I'd be glad to.
I'm curious, what about the hemp industry? Do we have people in Lee County interested in, I mean, there?
Yeah, we do. There's, of course, still a lot of uncertainty about hemp, about viability of growing it here, but there are some folks that are trying it and some that have had success with it. We are trying, I guess we're taking the approach of proceeding with caution right now. Don't literally put the whole farm into it right now. Don't sell the farm to do that, but there's a lot of potential. I mean, some of the oils and the medicinal purposes of it. Of course, it's not an approved or FDA-regulated crop right now, so that leads to some challenges in itself, but that's something that we're monitoring closely, and we've already had some hemp workshops here in Lee County to inform our growers about what they need to know if they're looking to get into it. But it wouldn't surprise me if in the next couple of years we have a few more, and we've already got some that are testing the waters, and that's, of course, what Extension is here to try to provide support for them and information about as they venture down these new paths in agriculture, try to give them the education that they can use.
One of the largest growers in the country, in North Carolina.
Ryan Patterson down there.
And one fun fact, you know, that we've looked at in these talks is, in the next 20 years, 50% of the population in this country will be in eight states, and North Carolina is one of them. So if you just sort of let that fact sink in, that half the population in this country will be in eight states and we're one of them, and more and more people want to know where their food comes from, you know, they want local foods, they want to be able to look at the back of the package and say, hey, saying for North Carolina, that's right down the road, you know, this is a good thing. And with the tariff situation that we've got now, it's, I think it's going to open more doors for our North Carolina and our U.S. farmers.
Is the farm table, is one of the farm tables?
Farm table.
Any more questions for Bill? Okay, thank you. We'll just kind of keep meeting and getting stuff together?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And hopefully we'll hear some more from the farm community on this program in the next month or so. Okay, item C, the consideration of adoption of a new construction contract that's included in the bid packages, Ms. Parish?
Yes, so in your package, you'll see the contract that is in the first three pages, but on page 253 through 255 of the docket, or docket agenda, and that is what currently goes out in the bid packages. So we just drafted a new agreement that's a little more encompassing and covers more information, and Russell and Santiago graciously also reviewed it, as well as the yield department. So we're just asking to have the board approve that as a sample agreement that will go out. I don't know when the last time that had been updated, but it's been a while.
If Russell doesn't know, then it's.
Been a while.
Been a while. Any questions or discussion?
Contrary.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I've looked at it a little bit. Couple of questions I got is, five.
On the insurance.
Lump sum payment, says lump sum payment. On a contract, you wouldn't make a lump sum payment, would you? You had a project that was a million dollars and the contract was on it for a year.
Well, we can look at that for each contract. You're right, it does indicate that payment would be made on to the contract our county is satisfied, so we can make a note of that. So depending on the amount of the contract, we can put on that.
Payment request.
Correct, or however, and we could work with Lisa as well with that and make sure that we have the payment scheduled correctly. But we can just kind of leave that as a, you know, something that will change depending on each contract and the amount of it.
Okay. How about on the four, it says, we'll complete within, it's got a blank, but it didn't say anything about any penalties if they're late.
Okay, we can also indicate that the liquidated name is.
Okay. Also, I was looking at item two, prime contractor, I don't see a word what, you requested him to list his subcontractors.
That'd be the bid packages elsewhere, Russell?
Yeah, that's usually in your bid package. Once you normally know you have it in your bid package, that, you know, you list your subcontractors, and of course, the contractor is responsible for the subcontractors.
Okay, and I was just looking at number 10. I'm just going, contracts I've been used to seeing, say he's responsible for paying all the taxes, but you don't say that you require him to send you any kind of no rise affidavit saying the taxes have been paid.
Yeah, we probably, yeah. Lisa says.
She's checking, Lisa.
Did you have that, Lisa?
We need to have that in there.
Right. Okay, that's all I got.
I can make those changes and bring it back to the board if you'd like, or?
Or you can make a motion.
We can make a motion to approve it with those changes.
Changes, okay.
I'll do that. I'll make a motion to approve it with those changes.
All right. Any more questions or discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, we added item E, the Boys and Girls Club. Mr. Reeves?
Yes, I guess all of us probably read whether it was going to close one of the programs that were on Church Street, the Boys and Girls Club in Christian. But the explanation in the paper didn't seem to satisfy my concern, and that is, you're closing down, one, you've got a waiting list of individuals to become members of the Boys and Girls Club. I don't understand what transpired. I know that we appropriated, what was it, $10,000, and they already started drawing down on that money. I would ask the board to invite the director.
Mr. Simmons.
Someone on their board to perhaps offer an explanation, and I would further ask that we hold any further payments until we get a reasonable explanation of what has transpired. I personally would want it to keep the club open to find out whether or not there was something we could have done, the county and the city both, but it seems to be a pretty cut-and-dry situation with no explanation, and I've been a supporter of funding them for.
But we all.
Yeah.
So basically, you know, just asking for kind of a consensus on having them come and speak with us at the next meeting?
Yes, I'm asking that we submit it in writing and also notify them on withhold payment until it's time we receive an explanation. I would like to see the program stay open if it's possible. I know that the housing authority has, owns the, excuse me, owns the building, but again, there's two different boards and we're sort of caught without any.
The kids are caught in the middle.
I agree. I agree, and it's located in the area where it's been proven we really need a program for those children.
Okay, so that's a form of a motion.
So moved.
Any questions or comments on that? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And I, Mr. Reeves, I will try to get in touch with Mr. Simmons, it just, kind of storm got in the way with, but.
Yeah, this is, by no means any attempt to take over Boys and Girls, it's just that if we're a funding agency, we need to be responsible enough to know what's going on.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Item, item F, that Mr. Sloan added declaration for hurricane relief, especially concerning the farmers.
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Crumpin before the meeting. I just wanted to make sure that if we needed to make a formal request to be included in the disaster declaration in one of the counties, because of primarily the agricultural damage that I saw on the way here today is for the tobacco farmers, the corn farmers, it's quite substantial. There's as much tobacco on the ground as there is on stalk in some places. Yeah, and it's probably 60% of the corn's on the ground from what I saw today. So I wanted to make sure that we were included if we needed to do anything from a board's standpoint that we did.
They start with their insurance, or is that how it starts?
Yeah, regarding collateral insurance.
Okay. Okay.
But not everybody has insurance.
That's right.
Right. But then who would they report it to? Our ag extension folks?
Yeah, yeah, Farm Service Agency.
The federal agency.
But if the county's not declared, they're not eligible at all, if I'm not mistaken.
The FSA request ends up being part of our total request.
Yeah.
And, you know, Bill didn't report, so I guess he didn't have the final report, but he and Zach and Amanda are riding around the farms, you know, right now. They did some most of the day and we're going to go back out tomorrow and try to get an assessment of the damage. And then, you know, like Shane said, you know, we've got ponds that have overflowed and flooding and, you know, most of you know, you've got a farm that's got a irrigation pond, you know, pond, you know, if it overflows and then you have, you know, problems and have to go back in and soil and water will make you do certain things, you know, to prevent soil erosion and that kind of thing. So they could have a lot of additional costs that, you know, we don't quite know yet until the rain completely stops and things dry a little bit.
What about tobacco in the barn that was being cured?
Well, we...
Depends on, if you have a generator or not, then that falls back on the insurance.
But you might have four barns.
Yeah.
Right. But we had one generator that we put on four barns at a time and just had to keep rotating it around. And, you know, the same with some of the other farmers. But even then, our generator just decided to go on hiatus for about eight hours, you know. So, yeah, you know. And then, of course, this is a farmer in Hornet County, but he, his generator just died, couldn't get an electrician to come because they were all busy. And, you know, he had 16 barns and no power, so that's all gone.
Technology's great, you know? Farmers have come a long way, but years ago it would have been stoking it, they would firewood.
Those old stick barns, yeah, we started to, we talked about cranking a couple of those, but couldn't find enough tobacco sticks.
Maybe we can do a PSA just to remind some don't have insurance that they ought to get in touch with.
Well, Zach already has, Zach Taylor with our extension. He's already sent emails out to the farmers, you know, in the area. I'm seeing that already.
Put Jamie on it.
Okay. Jamie, get in touch with Bill and get that information.
Wednesday when she announced that curfew quarter to six, I was getting complaints.
She is wonderful to have. I know.
I didn't even know it was announced.
Okay, we'll take care of that to you. Okay, any other support?
Yes ma'am, I haven't gotten very far on sharing the courthouse draft renovations. I've spoken with the registered deeds and the clerk. Both have already made suggestions to me that actually I think would save us money and help us, you know, with some other issues. So we're probably going to be going back to the drawing board a little bit with the architect on that. So keep trying to work through all that. The park master plans were, the phase one was approved by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board at their last meeting. So Waters and Ravenel will be here on October 15th to present the plan. And hopefully we'll be able to get moving forward on some of those projects pretty quickly. Upcoming events, September 27th, terminal building groundbreaking at the airport at eight. That has been changed to eight 30. The Secretary of Transportation will be there, so they had to move it back 30 minutes for him to be there. Then the Triangle J Council Governance Economic Summit is at the Dennis Wicker Center at nine 30. As far as I know, both events have not changed based on the storm from last week. We are proposing that the board consider going to one meeting in October until October 15th, mainly because we don't have much of an agenda for October 1st and feel that'd be better to go ahead and combine the two to have one. And then we get back to the regular meetings on November 5th and November 19th.
So moved. Because you need one.
Didn't even have to ask. I was just getting ready to ask, so I knew we need a motion to make that happen.
Okay, so there's a motion to just have the one meeting on the 15th. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
And I wanted to introduce Mike Smith, the new executive director of Saga, because that gets into my next item, which is, I think the annual meeting was supposed to be Wednesday this week, and it has been postponed to Tuesday, the 25th, if that is correct. So if you have a ticket for the 19th, it's good on the 25th, not the 19th.
When it be?
Same place, same time.
Same time, same...
Same station, all that stuff. But a little much trying to get it done this week. And I've talked enough tonight in that chair, so I'm finished.
Okay, Mr.'s comments? Mr. Dodson?
I'll just kind of reiterate what Madam Chair said, that I'm very, very thankful for all of our first responders. And I know me and my wife, our business was out of, had no power for a couple of days, Friday and Saturday. So basically, we were home most all the time. I ain't never watched so many Netflix movies in all my life. I'm about movieed out, popcorn, toaster trudles. I mean, me and my wife, we did, we said, we've never watched this many movies in our life, you know? But yeah, we had a lot of good quality time, but even still though, I mean, I thought, you know, here we are snug as a bug. You know, I think we were blessed that we didn't get hit as hard as it was originally forecast, so we were really blessed in that area. But I did think about all the folks out there, you know, keeping things going and, you know, Shane and his staff and those linemen, you know, they have a dangerous job. And very appreciative, we lost power a couple of times, but in nothing flat, it was back on again. So I knew they were out there really working hard. I'm just thankful that, you know, we weren't hitting harder than we were. That's all I have.
Yes, I know, we were definitely blessed. Like I remember everybody down at the shore. They're just going to be out for a long time, so keep doing your prayers and look out for your neighbors.
Yeah, just thank you to the county manager. I called him Saturday night, he couldn't even hardly talk. He was so tired. And I went out to the EOC and they were on top of it. Heath, Angelina, Jamie, they were, I went to the shelters, they were all, everything was on point down there. So thank you to you guys.
Well, again, unlike everyone else, I'm thankful for what everyone's done, you know? We've come through this thing in pretty good shape. The other thing I want to mention, I don't know how many of you people have seen our folks out picking up trash? Any of y'all seen those folks?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I've seen them and I actually pulled over and stopped them and said, hey, let me thank you. But you know, I think we're headed the right way. I see an improvement with the trash in the county, not on Steel Bridge Road, but other places in the county. We're still getting our part of it.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
So I want to second what everybody says as far as thanking the staff and the county manager and all the EOC first responders, et cetera. But I also want to thank everybody for the cards and the prayers. I've had a rough three weeks and I'm experiencing some of the emotional part of it now, as you can tell, but I, I've been through something I never expected to have before a long time. So I did receive a lot of prayers and cards from people in this room and I greatly appreciate it, so thank you all.
It's good to see you here again.
It's good to be back here.
I know that. I'm dead before you were. I know what it's about. I want to mention this plan here. This is the one we were talking about earlier. There's some things in here that I would feel much more comfortable if we had a little more discussion about. I guess a quick example is, what is the, the program you own one time, the TR?
The TARPA group?
Yeah, TARPA. You know, when you look at this document, for example, this is on page 40. It really blows my mind when I look at, they've got Kelly Drive, yeah, they've got Kelly Drive in here, but I'm looking at what we're spending to widen the multi-lanes going to Broadway. Thirty-five million. And for 3.5 million, we could have fixed the Kelly Drive situation, which provides better access for education, Community College, where we just invested 23 million dollars. So I know we don't run that DOT, but we certainly need to start bending ears a little more than we are for the kind of investment that we're making. That's just my view.
Which not only helps our county, but helps the state as well.
That's correct.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's correct. And like everybody else, I think, I think this hurricane helped prove how many good, decent people we have in Lee County. You know, especially our staff, I'll always favor the good staff. But I can't help to comment on that curfew. When you see people, I saw people at home that usually come out, I don't care who says not to come out, but people cleared the highway and streets and pretty much stayed in and helped their neighbors. And, you know, that's a great feeling. I had to deal with that emotion in the dark most of this weekend. I forgive Duke Power, I know that they were like, they intended to get me early, they didn't, and I'm not angry, so I'm just, I'm not taking it personally.
Neither am I.
Yeah. No, seriously. I know that a lot of people really wanted to help others get electricity, but I know that they were all doing the best they could and going where the priorities were. I'm just thankful to be here today.
Well, and it was, as Shane said, it was such a tough storm to deal with. And I know, you know, from, from the, from Duke and Central Electric's perspective, with the wind gust of, you know, 30 and 35 miles an hour, you can't put those guys up in those buckets handling electric power lines. It's just not safe. So we kind of had to wait a little while for the weather to clear so they could get going, but once they got going, man alive, you know? And I will share, you know, to, again, to speak to his point, from the co-op standpoint, from the moment it seemed to be that we were going to get hit and start losing power, they started getting calls from co-ops all over the country saying, we're on our way, you just say when. And I know that there were, you know, other electric providers and other co-ops that didn't get those calls. You know, our folks are special here in Lee County. They, you know, they are really ready to go and help their neighbors, not just in this state, but in other states. And it was very obvious that those folks were ready to pay back. You know, we had some folks from Kentucky and I think West Virginia around the farm putting our power back on. Just super guys. A couple of quick websites that I was asked to share, and I'm looking at Jamie if she wants to take those down and share too. If you have to travel, we've got so many roads around the state in our area, you know, that have shut down and more continue to shut down as these rivers rise. If you will go to drivenc.gov, they're updating hourly the roads that are impassable or that are closed. I mean, I can't remember when 40 and 95 have both been closed in certain parts. So drivenc.gov. And then along those lines, if you would like to donate, because if you're watching the news, you know the immense need of counties. I mean, even Hornet County and Cumberland and Robison, you know, are suffering tremendously tonight, as well as our coastal counties. Always the Red Cross, but, you know, a fund that is definitely staying in North Carolina is governor.nc.gov. And that's a donation site by the governor's office. And that money will go to North Carolina citizens for Hurricane Florence. It's dedicated to that. I would like to say how thankful I am to see Tim here tonight. He has had a tough time, but we're glad to see him back. And two more public service announcements. I was asked to remind folks that the head of the class celebration was going to be tomorrow. And of course, the winning school was going to be invited, but with no school, obviously that's been postponed. And also the Education Foundation banquet that was to be held has also been postponed. And they're going to try to set both of those events up in November because the governor was to attend. So that's all I have. Please stay safe. Water's still rising in some parts of the county, and I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Good work.
Thank you very much.